Good, okay. And then make you host again. Okay, that's all done divine.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. How is everyone doing today? Please. To speak because we are not here to preach, we are here to discuss, learn and move on, okay? So how is everyone doing?
Uh, fine, thank you.
Good, good. How many are we now? Five, yeah? Okay. Stanley, are you okay, please?
You're alright. I'm good, I'm alright, thank you.
Good man, good, good.
Thanks, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, okay, today is, it's just a recap today, we are just going to do. What we normally do, the support resistance and range. Um, excuse me. Hello, sorry. Okay, so you're going to do something for the. Support, the resistance and ranging, that is the movement of um. The market, I know many of us have heard of it and many of us know what it is. Who has heard about it? The support, resistance and ranging or consolidation, who has heard about it?
I heard that. Yes.
Great, great, so today we are all going to help ourselves understand more, then we go. Maybe add a little bit sauce, yeah, then we go, we go ahead with it, then we add. A few bits of spices, then we call it a day. Is everyone with me?
Sounds amazing.
Absolutely.
Great, 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 let's just jump in on to the chat. So. As you all know. Let's draw this. Everyone can see the chat, please, can everyone see it?
Yes, I can see your screen.
Great, um. There we go. I just want to deal with that, um, yeah, the chat. One. So what are the futures, yeah, of an up trending market? When the market is trending, like. My doing. What are the futures, what are some of the keys that you can see? Anyone have any idea?
Higher highs and higher lows.
Good, great, thank you very much, boss man. And what about downwards trend?
Lower highs and lower lows.
Great, so we can see that from here is going upwards, the trend is up trending. There we go, you can see it's up trending and it's making. A higher high, a higher low, a higher high, a higher low, which our man said. Um, so you can see. Like, people doesn't really understand higher, high, higher, low, it just means that next high candle state or the next high um. Candle movement is really higher than the previous ones. Okay, so you can see here. And this high, this high is higher than this, that is called a higher high. And you can see here as well, here, this high is higher than that. That is why we call it a higher high, is everyone clear with it?
Yes.
Good, so we move on to a higher high and a higher low. What do you mean by a higher low? You see this previous low and we see this. The next low, the next low is higher than the low. The previous low, which makes it this one a lower high. Do you get it? So we get here to a lower high as well because it's lower. It's lower but higher than this. We got a lower high is lower but higher than this. Is it clear, please?
Makes sense, yes.
Great, so if we go to the downwards trend as well, the trend is going downwards, we can see. That way we can get to black, okay, the downwards trend, the downward trend as um Steve said. Is Stanley said is uh lower low, lower high, lower low, lower high, okay? So we have a low here, it came a low here, meaning that this point. And this point, this point is lower than this one, that is called the lower low. It's lower than the low, okay?
Yes, makes sense.
Right, the same applies to this, it lower high, lower low, lower high, lower low, lower high, lower low. This is the high of the um mountain, but it's lower than this point, so it's a lower high. And this is lower than this low, so it's called a lower low, the same applies to this, lower low. Lower low, lower low, and we have a lower high, lower high, lower high, is it understood?
Understood.
Good, here we go. To this zone, what is the name of this zone? Does anyone have any idea to what the candle states are there over here? It's just jumping rapidly up and down, up and down, what do we call it?
Ranging or trending.
Good, or. Or it's called consolidation. Okay, guys, ranging, consolidation or trending. Um, or ranging, okay, so it's ranging. It's consolidated or consolidation or making whatever the market is making over there. Which is a way of the market makers to rob people. But anyways, let's go to the actual. The actual graph, it's not easy to indicate on the graph, hope everyone use um. This um, what's it called again, um, trading view. Everyone uses trading view, right?
Yes, trading view.
Great, I want us to communicate, yeah, I want us to participate because I don't want. Us just to listen and just go, I want everyone to participate in this. Okay, so we can see here, let's take what Friday did. You can see is. What is this? What will you, will you call this, this zone?
Um, a higher high or is it consolid- like consolidation, I'm just throwing my.
You got it, you got it, it's a higher high, this is because. You can see it went up. You break this structure and this one was the previous high. So it's a higher high, higher than the high, is it all? Good, and it gained, it came downwards, what is this zone, this one here? Is a higher low. Because it's higher than this low. You get the point. So the market.
Yes.
Trending now, but there is something we call fake out. Fake out means instead of it just bouncing and going straight to. Where it should be going, it's not going, but the market makers would just fake it out or sweep. A professional will say it's a sweep, they will sweep all the take profit, um. The stock losses over here, take all of the stock losses, the money over here and distribute it over here. They distribute it for these people to gain and these people here lose the money. So that is a false movement over here, is it clear?
Yes.
Good. So now we have indicate the higher, high, higher, low, we can go on and on. We can go on and on and on with the high, high, higher, low, higher, high, as um wow would. Obviously teach us about it, higher, high, higher, low, we can see here, if you zoom out, you can see. On the one hour is more cool. Okay, so we can see a higher high, a higher low, a higher high. I'm sorry, sorry, that is um, that was straight, sorry. Um, so here we, here we go. A higher, 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 low, higher, high, higher, low, higher, high, a higher, low, higher, high. And he's going and with the downward strength, we have a lower low, was it? Okay. The downward strength, we have a lower, low, lower. Yeah. Trending like that, okay, this is more. That lower low, lower high, lower low, lower high, lower low. And it started consolidation over here, consolidating, as you can see over here is consolidated. Then it's moving in different direction. So now, let's move on to today's topic, today's topic is just the resistance and support. So as you, we all know, you can draw this resistance and support using. I normally use what um Jeff always use. Jeff always turn this candle stake into line, so the tip of each line. Will determine whether it's a support or a resistance, when we say a supporter or resistance, it's like the roof. And the um floor of your room, wherever price are rejecting. Whether it's below or whether it's high. That is the point of um support or resistance, so over here we can see here. The tip of every line determines. Our support zone and our resistance zone, so we can see here as well. There. So price came down, it bounds off. It went to the top, the roof rejected it and it came downwards, so what is this on code, this line?
The top line with distance.
Okay, good, and this one?
Support.
Support, great, 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 great. Now, we can find a lot of that, that as um. We always say, uh, wow. Jay or Justin and um. Jeffrey, that's the one I normally use and Gustavo as well, though I don't understand Spanish, but. When it's about money, no matter what the language is, you understand, trust me. So what they normally do is they start from the higher time zone. Am I right or wrong? So they start from the higher time zone, then they move on to the lower time zone, so let's. Look at this pair. This pair for example. Where should I put my support and where should I put my resist that, um, yeah, resistance? Is it here or here? Or here or here?
Hmm, I'll probably put where the two, you know where they have the two.
It's one.
Yeah, but yeah, I'd probably put it there.
Alright.
Kind of overboard and then just kind of went out, um, wow. That is a zone there, but then your, your resistance has um one, two, three, four tips there. But then you could go higher.
There?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or you can go all the way to the top because that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, that, that's a good catch, you know. That's a good, that is like trading like the band, yeah, because it touched here and the. Fine, that, that is good, that is correct, but you should know that we read from the future as well, though we are reading from the past. We read from the future as well, we can see here, price rejected over here. And we can see the price bounce. It came and it bounced up.
Yes.
Yeah, it rejected. Let's turn to the candle states, you see? Though, true rate in, we can see this, there is rejection over here. Price returns. There is a bounce over here as well, you can see it. You can see a bounce here, we can see a rejection here on the. So, so um, but it's called resistance zone, yeah, or the resistance and here. The support. Here, support. So these shows us the support, the resistance. And this resistance became a supporter game for this one. And now these become a resistance for this one and it's coming straight to the support, is it clear?
Yes, it's clear.
Yes.
Great, uh, now we go to the weekly, weekly timeframe. So the black ones are the monthly timeframe which we know that is prices coming downwards. It's in the downwards trend, so people can, some professionals just see this and they'll be like, okay. This is my support, this is my. Oh, sorry, this is my support, this is my um resistance zone, but for me. I, I really love how Jeff and Justin. Or Jay, that's yes with the line because the line helps you to really notice what is actually happening. If you are not having that good eye, so I will just go to the line again, we can see there are several. Bounce over here. Alright, you can see here another one over there, let's change this. Right to. This color. We can see here. We can see there is some here. And here as well. Am I right?
No, yeah, makes sense.
Absolutely.
Good, good, so if we know that price. Has a support here and has a resistance here, then what zone is this one? To this. Movement.
Supports.
Supports, thank you, thank you very, that is great, that is a support zone. That is a support zone, making this zone what? Making that one what?
The resistant.
The resistant, hundred percent, hundred percent. So we can go over and over using the timeframe. Then we go to the daily, yeah, I, I normally do carpet, I normally do like um both. Waiting for the price to hit my profits if I just do anything. Or stay in the trade for longer time or just grabbing few picks and just be like, fuck it, I'm gone. Because the market is not your friend, you know, you need to grab it and run. That's what one, one of my friends would say, just grab the money and run away. It's like in the Bible when Joseph met forty first wife, he say he, he flee. Is it right? He flee, like, he didn't run, he flee away. That is what you should do in the market, grab the money and fly. Fly away, just go away, otherwise it will come against you, so we can see here as well. Let's help me to draw this. We got here, is it here, yeah?
Yeah, we can go, we can go lower.
Lower, okay.
There's one thing, actually, I like that one in the future, but then the higher little bit as well, even lower.
Oh, alright, great, there you go.
And. Yeah.
Yep. Any other?
You could go then just a little bit higher, I don't know if you'd go there. No, just where you were before, just a bit lower and you didn't mark it just yet, perfect. That hit twice there, four, four times actually, um, even lower, there's so many.
There's so many, but you can see here.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay, you can see another resistance over here.
Yes.
Yeah, so when you are a beginner, you'll be like drawing these things and you know. Makes your chat a lot bigger, it have to be. But we can see that, okay, okay, look, what trend is this?
Down trend?
Down trend, which is called a bearish movement or bearish trend, so even drawing the. The trend, you can use the same thing, the line, then use your trend. Right here, touches that tip of the line. You can see that it touches that tip of the line. You go back to your candle stake and look, the magic is done. You can see whenever it touches it, hmm, it came down. So if we come really close to it like this, touches one, two, three. Boom, and we are still at that. Point, which makes it a strong point here, a strong point here. We are not marking the market today, I'm not an expert, so I'm just a learner like you guys. But if I am supposed to trade this, I'll just wait. For price to either. Break, retest. Then continue to this one. Or price will reject, retest, then continue to this zone. Is it clear?
Yes, yeah.
And. The correct time for you to enter is on the retest, when you retest, it gives you. A story, he shows is coming down, then you can enter over here. When you retest, it gives you a story that is going up, whether a reversal candle stays, then you can enter over here. That is the correct entry point. Okay, guys?
Yes.
Great, so we all understand the support, the resistance, okay? Are we all?
It's for me.
Definitely.
Good, good, now, let's move on to this. What we call the consolidation, one of my best. Do we trade consolidation? Or not?
In binary, it's very beautiful, you know, you catch a good, a good move.
I try to avoid it, um, it just doesn't give me enough time to react.
Good. Okay, so what traders, normal professionals would say, don't trade consolidation. But if you know how to trade it, it's a good way to get money, let's see this. What zone will you call this, um, what line will you call this line?
The resistance line?
More of. Let, let me use this. Let me clear, make the chat be. Right here, this, this line, okay, make it clear now. Resistance, and this one?
Supports.
Now, now guess what, price is doing, so if you are trading this. And price is hitting, you see, it hits here, it returns back. It came back again. Will you sell? Because you have that idea here.
It's, it's kind of giving you two touches, so that's like a good, like, yes, giving you two touches, so. For the next trade, depending on how you're trading, you could maybe take a three minute sell and you would clear.
Or binaries, great. And on trading?
Hmm, it's a bit risky still.
I think it's the same, so you got three touches here, which shows you is a great resistance zone and then. Just move downwards.
Beautiful movement, hmm.
Supports, now, guess what the market makers did, they faked out. Faking out means taking all the stock loss, because I know if we are going to place this trade. I know people just put their stop losses over here. A lot of stop losses because price has already revisited this zone. And came back down, so. It can never go above this one. Am I making sense?
Yes, making sense.
So, put their stop losses over there and trade. To get your profit over here, which is a ninety five. Redeem a timeframe, that is for our timeframe consolidation, that gives us how much, ninety five pips.
That's beautiful.
That is beautiful, and guess what? This is what the market makers would do to get our money, so they will make you enjoy. The zone. That, oh, the movement, oh man, I'm getting it, you get too excited, it hits. It came back, you got your profit, it hits, it came back, you got your profit, you buy again, you see? Then you put your stop loss over here, it's still the game, you get another profit, right? Now. Here it comes, you realize, okay, this is the previous zone. And I know it won't really come above it, so I'll just put. Um, let me delete that. And get this, I'll just put my stop loss. At this point. This point. Let's put my stop plus at this point because it, it won't really, you know, just beneath it, just a little bit. It won't come across it, and guess what they did, they fit it out, they hit your stop loss. Then what do they do with your money, they distribute it to people who wants to buy continually. So this is called a sweep. It's called a sweep or fake out. Fake out. Fake out or sweep. So the market. So the market makers are sweeping you off to get your money and distribute it for the right people. It has happened to us all before, have you experienced that before? Because if you're not like, oh, the price is going. You just go and like, boom, prices float.
So annoying.
So annoying, really, really annoying, okay, now. That is our support and resistance, we can go over and over and over again. But is it clear with everyone, yeah, support and resistance?
Yes.
Yes, I love support and resistance, I want to continue to know more, so thank you.
Great, now, what you should notice, support and resistance is not just a lie, it is a zone. Okay, it is a zone, so that is the zone we call the demand and surprise zone. Okay. The demand and the surprise zone, so if we 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 are just going to concentrate on this. And we be like, okay, um we can see our resistance here. We can see our support here, it's just a line, and the market is respectfully. Going through it. Just respectfully, respecting the zones, am I right? The lines, the lines. But what we know is, these lines are zones, they are not just a normal line, they are zones. What do I mean by zone? So we can see from this candlestick to this candlestick. From this high to this weak. They are zone, that is the zone. And from here, we can see it rejected over here. To this line, it rejected it a lot, so you can put another one here. You can see the rejection style from this place to that place, that is a zone. So what is the zone called? I know you know these zones, what what is this zone called?
I'm uh support zone?
Man. Yes, it's a support and it's a demand zone, and this is the, this is what.
Supply zone.
Supply zone or the resistance zone.
Hmm, thank you.
So always remember this, you can put a line over there. But the whole thing is more of a zone. When you are a trader, when they are, yeah, teaching you, they they start with the lines, the support, the resistance. The support, the resistance, but as you grow off, you see that they are zones. Where the market really visited and being rejected. Let's go to a lower timeframe for you to really understand this. So we got here, if you go to the lower timeframe, like one hour timeframe. Now. You can see the zones, so price move up. Look, so price move up to this zone, which is. The support zone or the demand. Um, sorry, am I getting it right though?
Is, I don't know if your screen is moving, is your mouse moving?
Yeah, my mouse is moving, can you see?
Not, not, okay, maybe not for me.
Let me. Can you see it?
Hold on, let me make you have to get my.
Oh, okay, cool.
I can't see your other device, I can only see one of your devices.
Uh, let me, okay, let me read. We enter the, okay. It's connecting, oh. So as I was saying, oh, am I, am I there? Still not there? Sorry guys, sorry. Okay, I'm back. Okay, I think I'm there.
Okay, you should be house now.
Can you see it well, please?
Yes, I can start to see the screen now.
Believe. Sorry guys, sorry, um, let's just move on, see what we were discussing. Okay. So you can see, when we move to one hour timeframe, we can see the zones again. Why is this on again, please? Help me with it.
Why zone?
Supply zone, yeah.
Rise on, good, so the price. Went up to the surprise zone, then it came down, to what zone is this, please?
Demand zone.
Man zone. You see, it's more, it's more clear, clear when you go to the lower time fling, um frames. Am I right with the zones?
Yes.
When you use the line for the higher timeframes, when you go to the lower timeframe, you can see. Hmm, there is a bit of like, the candlesticks is getting rejected, because we first. Did this line, which was our supply, um our resistance line. But when we came to the lower timeframe, we can see there are weeks here. Which makes the tip of the wick another line. So this tells us that the support and resistance, which is just a line, is not really a line. But it is a zone, a zone that we are being um discussing right now. Is it clear, please?
Yes, this makes good sense.
Yeah, great, so we can, we can see the same thing over here again, yeah, we can see the same thing here. Uh. There. To that zone. Today's on. And the market is too like respectful that, whenever it hits, it comes back. It hits, it comes back, unless the market makers want to rob you. Or want to take our money from us, then it gives up the fake outs that we were talking about, okay? Hmm, the account, these fake outs. These are fake outs, but what can you say about this fake out though? Is it a real fake out or is it really going the other way? What would you say?
It broke the support and it was trying to retest the support. To turn it into a resistance, but go rejecting, but then it created another support. Where your line was, yeah, so, so that's quite deceptive, because it can fool someone.
Dude. Okay. Remember that we are in the one hour timeframe, so that shows us there might be more supports. Ahead on the, uh in the lower timeframe, and there might be more resistance in the lower timeframe, so this thing. Might be a fake out or not, what would you say? Would it be a fake out or not?
I would say be a fake out, just because of the way, yeah, it's moving.
Okay.
Because it could be.
Hmm.
A lot of, for this one hour, but that's a lot of hours in there.
Hmm, I understand. Yeah, hundred percent.
So, yeah.
Any, any other um idea, please?
So I think it's, it's almost like giving you, um it's like uh the. The litmus test, like a generic test, it's telling you that. Price might go down, yeah, so it might appear as a fake out, but it's like preparing you for what's probably gonna happen. Because you look at it, it's already broken that support, right? So it's, I said that supply zone is not so strong.
Hmm.
Yeah, so if you're, if you're very careful, you can now start preparing that at any point in time. This supply zone will no longer be valid, that's my, the way I would trade it.
Hundred percent, hundred percent, anyone else? I lo- I love the way the team is working, I love it, anything else, please?
I'm allowed that explanation, I like that explanation.
So what what you should know is, it breaks, as Sterling said. That means it's going downwards, so it's not really a big out. But on the high timeframe, like for hours, you can see. Hmm, for the four hour timeframe, it just fake you up, be like, oh, we are going now, then ha, we got here. We go apples, you get the, that it depends. On the timeframe you are trading as well. Whether it would be fake out, you are, i- if you are willing to stay in for a longer time, period of time. Then it's not a fake out. Because you can sell here, put your stop loss over here, then you see what the market did.
Beautiful drop.
Beautiful, remember, before we we started this, I showed you this. Um Sterling wasn't here, but this is um something I I realized. So you can see over this side, it's like consolidating, isn't it? It hits. It hits, it return, it hits, it return, am I right?
Hmm, you're right.
And guess what? It gives a false move.
Hmm.
Then the real move happens.
Hmm.
Guess here, this one. So it hits, it's consolidating, here it gave the false move.
Hmm.
It hit the zone and the real move happened.
And, yeah, wow, even there, that, even the others, even the next one next to it.
Hundred percent, hundred percent, it consolidated, give the force, um it's still in consolidation here. Oh, I'm making a mess, sorry guys. Yeah, so it consolidated over here. As you can see, it was hitting, 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 then it gave the false move. Then the room will happen.
Hmm.
Is it clear?
Very clear.
Yeah.
Great, so back to what we were saying. Let me just clear my chat, make it clear. Okay, alright, so let's go to the one hour timeframe and see what we have over there. There we go. So we can see the market here, he faked us out over here, he came back. Then break it. What shows that it wasn't fake out is this candlestick, always the candlestick tells the story. This candlestick was fully formed. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Fully formed, that means it breaks this zone, the demand zone, making this zone the demand. Making this the surprise zone. Is it clear?
Clear.
Let's go to the thirty minutes, thirty thirty minutes, which has a lot about it. Even support or resistance, or um was it a fake out? Where I'm on candles. Okay, good. Here we are. On the one hour timeframe, on the thirty minutes timeframe. Now, is it more clear? That it was it? A fake out, it breaks. The zone, look at the candlestick.
Hmm.
This candlestick.
Hmm.
It pushes, it started from this zone, trying to buy, but the sellers were in control. That's why you can see that ca- candlestick. Then it moved downwards, there is a name given to you, this. I don't know whether you have come across it. This zone, this um candlesticks, all green, all red, have anyone comes across a name given to it?
No, sir.
No.
What?
No.
No, okay, so require impulse, so in everything. As I was saying, there is a giveaway in everything. There is a giveaway in everything, even in trading, there is a giveaway as well, this is called impulse. So impulse move are the moves where. The market makers, there is no bias, there's hmm, there's no, if it's selling, there's no bias in. If it's buying, there's no selling, that is really um the market makers do it, you get me?
Yes.
This means that no matter how or how long the market will go. The market makers will bring it back again. To cover where there was no sellers or there was no buyers.
Hmm.
And that is free giving or free away giving trades. You don't catch these trades down there, but you catch the trades going upwards, covering it. I can show you a lot of it in here. So we can see. From here, you can see that. Uh, let me use this, you can see that there is only red here, am I right?
Yes.
That red candlesticks. From here to here, there's, they are only candles, red candlesticks, but guess what? It reverses over here and they catch stop over here to where price have already visited before. You can see here. And there. We can go over and over, you can see it happens over and over in the market, over here too. All green candlesticks, meaning all sellers, there's no bias in the market. Then it reverses, then now you can see the buyer sellers, the buyer sellers, the market moves. In its normal direction to where price already visited before.
Hmm.
Which is also called our support zone over here. On that um thirty minutes, the lower timeframe. Is everyone okay with this, the impulse?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so in gold, you can use that. Yeah, in gold, let, let's, let's see what gold does. It's all about patience. You see? See, let's look this way, they were all red. And they consolidated over here, but still all red to this place. Because the market makers wanted to trick people over here and get your money. They got that money and they gave it to those people set over here. And guess what, there was a rejection, candlestick over here, it rejected. Then the buyers came in. And guess what it did, it came up to where price have already visited before. Which is this. And remember, as I said. This will be a support for this candlestick, right? Am I right?
Yes.
And has become a resistance for this candlesticks, am I right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hmm, look what it did. Is our target, a target achieved from here to where price visited before. Has it achieved?
Hmm, yes.
You see? Though it doesn't really give it easily. Yeah, it would be like, oh, you're going, you're going, you're going, now you're not, now boom. Then give, that's why Mr. Nathan would be like, patient is the key, patient, no matter what, now. Let's move on to the resistance, as we were talking about before. We showed the um the impulse, we can see here. Price visited this place, it bounds off, making this line what? What is this line called, please?
Support.
Support.
But for this zone.
Mm hmm.
So if price are breaking through it and we know that it gives us an impulse to it. And there is a reversal, candlesticks going upwards. Where would our take profit be?
The next resistance.
The support which has turned into resistance, great, and we all know that. This is the case, that we all know that the line is not just a line, it is what is on. So we can, we can just go and see that in here. That is the tip of the line is down there and we got another one over here. Making the whole of this space a zone, what is the zone called again, please?
Demand.
Demand zone.
Demand zone for. For these ones. Right, demand zone for these ones, it went. Then it was demanded, then boom, it went up, fine. Let's move on to the future one, okay, so we know it went through it, we got. Our. Demand zone over here. The line that we drew that price rejected from the previous one. Is here, while zone is called, um is this called again?
Supply.
It's called the supply zone. And guess how respectfully price did, it just came to it, hit your take profit, then boom. It just tricked people up, came that, your take profit is gone. Is it clear? Am I making?
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Great, great, we can go over and over and over with the supply and demand zone. So always, what I want everyone to know is that their resistance and uh support. Are zones, okay, they are zones, okay, let's take what. Last Friday happened, what it happened, there was a news, that's why we got this move, okay, so. What is this line?
Support.
Support, good, where should I put my resistance, here or here or here or here?
At the very top.
At the very top, yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any, any idea?
I'll do it, you know, where it's tested multiple times.
Yes, like, yeah, and even lower as well.
You put it here, right?
Yeah, I will put it there.
Good, alright. Everyone is, everyone is correct, everyone is correct, so basically, what you should know is. At first, you should always, always target the zone which is really close first. Before you target that far away, because the market makers will trick you. And never reach this place by ten backwards, like what it did here. So if we, we were targeting this zone, which is a support for this, um a resistance for this. Um candle movement, if we target there for this movement. Would we have been um achieving our goals? That is no, because price rejected here and came backwards, that's why you have to. Target the zone which is really close to you first, take the profit, wait. And see whether price will break through it, then you target the next step.
Hmm.
Or the next zone, okay?
Yeah, thanks Dan.
Okay, sure.
Good, so let's move on to the zone, this is the line. That is the line, but obviously, as I said, it is a zone. We can see price was rejecting this zone, which is the demand zone. Okay, and we can see price was rejecting this zone. From the candlestick to the rig, which is the surprise zone. We can go on and on, like here and the tip. You can see the candlestick itself is here and the rig. All of these are zones. As you can see, price respectfully, it breaks it, retests, got to it, struggling, it breaks it. It tried to break it, but it didn't, it came, it rejected it, it consolidated. It gives a force movement, then the real movement happened. Then it breaks down consolidation. Consolidation, force movement, real movement happened. You see, it hit that, it came down, all this space. What is another name for this one, is elusive, ah, something else is, ah, it's.
Like raging.
Raging, it's called raging or consolidation. Yeah, so we, we don't trade, no, our advice, no one to trade this to find you, or let you know what you're doing. So let you know what you're doing, so ranges, it gave us. A force move. Which is to the upside, then the real move happened. While we normally do, our mistakes that we normally do is we chase the wrong movements. Have anyone done that before, chasing the wrong?
Yes.
Yeah, me.
Yeah, you want money, isn't it, so you'll be like, ah, let me get this.
Yeah, right, bro.
You get this bit, that is hundred and thirty eight pips, that is really, really a good pip, right? Am I right? That's really, really a good pip, but guess what, they did. They let you forget all these bit, four hundred and, almost, like. Almost a thousand pips, they make you forget all of it. They made you forget all of it, you see the pips here, thousand thirty six. They made you forget all of it because we were chasing this, as Mr. Nathan would say. We are invested, you have to have invest, investor minor uh mindset, sorry. An investor mindset, guess what, we are in the cell. Except of call, so we are in the cell, it's, it's, it's selling. You, everyone is in profit, everyone is enjoying, oh, I'm, I'm having money, I'm having money. You know, it's selling, hmm, then price suddenly. Suddenly returns and now everyone is negative, is in red. People will close their market, that they'll close their trades, ah, I don't want to lose, I don't want to lose. And guess what, they will do, the real move happened, the real movement happened.
I, I really remember that day.
Yeah.
It was, it was a news, I think um a farm news or something from the US, it was on Friday. So it was a very big dip, that came all of a sudden. That dropped down there over a thousand fish, it was a news bit, it's newly checked the. You see, it was on Friday.
I think some of us were enjoying in profit though.
I'm, I'm telling you, I'm telling.
Always remember.
At that top, because obviously part is, we hit that with um resistance zone before twice. And so it's kind of come to it again, and if you caught it there, you are laughing now.
Hundred percent, have that, always remember, check the news before you trade, please. Check the news for us, was, forestfactory.com. Please check the news before you trade, every morning, check the news.
Okay.
As the data will say, it's either you close it an hour before or thirty minutes before the news. Or you move your stop losses into profit, or you close in profits.
Hmm.
Or you just wait.
Hmm, okay, the fundamentals for this um weekend was like, it's like Thursday and Friday. It was just red folders the whole day.
Yes.
The whole, we were having a party for money.
Uh huh, they were stealing people money, you know, people were laughing, some were crying, so. Yeah, hundred percent, um, and what you should know is, I, I know people will be like, oh, what is this? What is this? Let me show you this, this is a, just a quick thing, yeah, so basically. What you should know about news, the red folders are the dangerous ones, they are the ones that really have impact in the markets. The orange ones have minimum impact in the market, but the yellow ones are free inputs, they, they have a little bit input, but not. Really high or massive inputs, yeah, so here you can see, we have the actual and we have the previews. So the previews are the previous um performance of the currency pair.
Hmm.
So we will be waiting for the actual, what is really happening. At that news time, okay, so let's see, if we go for gold. Gold is normally associated with USD, because when the US dollar is going upwards. Gold is going downwards, am I right? And when.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
When gold is going upwards, US is going downwards, and guess what, we have a Fed. A Fed, uh, whatsoever news of them, which is a red folder, which has a higher, eh, higher. Really high uh action upon the um market. And we have the orange one as well, so we have two of them over here, which is really like, oh my god. We should wait until we see what is really happening, the previous performance was seventy point two. But it became red because it's not going, it's not doing well, seventy point three, which is. Because it's not going, it's not doing well, seventy point three, which is really a higher than that one. So when it's red, that means we are not really performing. You get the point?
Okay, yes.
USD is not really performing, what will the currency do? They'll go down. Do you guys get me? Meaning that the gold will be going up, then the USD will be going down. Because of these results. Does everyone get me? Am I?
Yes, you are making sense.
I got it.
Yes, yeah, you're making sense.
Great, now. Let's see, you can't really depend on only this to just justify, okay, let me just go and buy gold. Or let me just go and sell, um, what is it called again?
USD.
USD, nah, it doesn't really happen like that. Uh, sorry. I'm coming, let, let's go to. Let's go to the chat, so that you can see what really happened that day. Oh, my team is not allowing me. Okay, good. Now. See what happened. For goat. So we, we were looking, I. What happened last Friday, right? That was last Friday.
Right.
Now look what, the same time what goat did. It gives rejection over here. During the news and poof, went, whoa. It went up like that. Making this zone, which is our zone over here. This on from here to this on, making, why is the name of this on? Again? This on.
Demand zone.
Demand zone, great, we got a demand zone. What's the name of this on?
Supply.
Supply zone, then what is the name of this on again?
Supply zone.
Supply, making this on what?
The demand.
It demands. Great, now. So we have seen. Like how news work, but I'm not trying to say to you, go trade news, no, please. It was just something to just, you know, teach you something, yeah? So if, if you want to, like, you have seen that news is red and, okay, what to do? Alright, you just wait for the candlesticks to tell you a story. It doesn't really happen like, okay, well, I've seen that the news gave me, uh. Let's say, let's use. Let's use that one again. Let's use the Friday again, they, they don't, the news I was giving me red on this card. Compared the USD, so going to sell US. And buy um like gold, no, you have to also go on the chat, yeah? And learn, see what the story of the candlesticks are telling. If it gives you a rejection over here, and it gives you a rejection again. And it's going up, remember that is a zone here, so you can obviously wait until this candlestick. Is fully formed, then you can enter and get some tips of it. Because it has already broken this zone, which is a demand zone. And it's coming to be a surprise zone, um, which was a supplying, is the demand going that way. And they hit that TP four, as, is it well understood?
Yes, sir.
Now, see what USD did at the same time. USD gave us a rig. What time was it? We can see the time, one, from one thirty to. Uh, two, we all know that the US market opens at two thirty, alright? So the two thirty gave us a true round. It gave us a rejection over here, making this on a rejection. Uh, what zone will you say this on is, is rejecting this on? Can, can we mute ourselves, please, if you are not contributing, please? Um, what zone would that be? Sorry, um, these are my, my own analysis, which is not, which is invalid now. Okay, let me just remove drawings, okay, cool. So we can see here. Price visited this place and is, it was rejected, he gave us a week here, so what is this zone called?
That is the supply zone, oh, sorry, not about this, um, demand zone.
Demand zone, cool, and he gives us this rig. There we go. You see? So I have to where the market open, let's see, what time was the news again? The news was three. We can see the news even happened at one thirty, one of the news happened, the candlestick was moving. It wasn't really moving, but you wait. For the market to open, the market opened, the at three. You can see, it gives us the results that it's not really performing, so we can see that here. Let's see, what time was it? Can everyone see the time? Below.
Yes, to three o'clock.
Three o'clock, what did he do? He gave us a strong candlestick to the downwards. That means the news has really affected it and the candlestick is telling us. It moves to the downwards, let's go to the one hour time, if that will really show us something. Oh, fifteen minutes, let's do fifteen minutes, now. You see, two forty five, it gave us this rejection. At two thirty, two forty five, it gave us, it breaks down the zone. It breaks down this on. Then it came back, that is a retest. And it came backwards. Can everyone see it? It started from here and the route. Market was rejected. Or price was rejected over here.
Yeah.
Price was rejected over there, then he moves downwards. So therefore, we can say, okay, price has already rejected here, then I can enter over here, then. Voila. You target it to the net zone. And you get your pips. Which is. From here to here. Twenty pips, easy. Easy twenty pips getting, but please, if you don't really know what you're doing, don't trade news. If you don't really know what you're doing, don't trade news, it just, um, something I just wanted to share, okay?
Thank you, thank you.
So, oh, we are all welcome, it happens everywhere, even that Euro. It happens as well, just go to any Euro, you see what happened? That was, what, what was it? On Wednesday. On Wednesday at nine AM. On Wednesday, Wednesday, what day it was here, Wednesday? Twenty feet. Twenty feet, Wednesday. Now, here's it. There we go. We got. Our zone here. We got another zone there. Making our demand and our supply zones, okay? Now. This is the time. At nine. Nine AM. At nine AM here, so what was the news saying? We can see that Euro here. Twenty fifth at nine AM, it gave us this. You see, the performance of Euro wasn't good, am I right? The previous was better than the actual one, am I right or wrong? Right, now look what happened, at nine. Maybe you'll be like, oh, okay, let me just go sell it, because it's not, it's not doing well. It came to this support zone, it came back. It hit this supposedly, it gave us rejections over here. It gave us rejections over here. Then you are still saying, oh, let me sell it, remember this zone, it didn't really break through it. Or did it break through it?
Doesn't look like, no.
Good, what did it do? It formed W, rather, you can see it came downwards. It hit the zone, it rejected it, it hit the zone again, it rejected it and it moves upwards. So as I would say, you should combine the news and what the candlesticks are telling you. You can't just depend on what the news are to trade, no. But based on fundamentals and the news will help you to be profitable in the market. Let's see the thirty minutes, maybe you can see. More rejections on the thirty minutes clearer than the. On the fifteen minutes, okay? I still, it lose, I think the fifteen minutes is more, the, the five minutes will be more better as well, but. Uh, I always trade the fifteen minutes, the thirty minutes, which is more clearer to me, okay? Even was, you can see, even if you miss this entry, yeah, you have another entry here. You can see it's clear over there, it came there to our resistance zone. It rejected it, then price continued to the up side. Though the news was saying it's not performing well, but remember. That if the news is affecting a currency, it might affect it at that particular instant. Or that time, or maybe later on. That, then the news will affect it, okay? Is that clear?
Yes, makes sense.
Great, so now we know how to use the um forest factory. With the news and the fundamentals, always remember, the fundamentals are the key. Support, resistance zones are the key. Alright, demand and supply are the key. If you know your demand zones, if you know your support zones, um, your supply zones. They are going to help you to identify where price have really visited and been rejected before. For you to know the target of where price has really so, um, reached and rejected before. Okay, we can go over and over, over it, over it, over and over. Every day, every time, but still, if you are not learning, you won't end. One thing you should know, all of what I'm, say, I'm like you, it's all on wow. It's all on wow, I use. To, I use the adjusting. You go downwards, you go show more, you go downwards, you go show more. To the very first video he, he did. Very first video he did, it talks about what you should know, utilize the. Utilize the apps, wow, utilize it, it's really good for us. The support and resistance zone, support and resistance zone, we can see all of it here. Go through it, this is your homework, go through it, study it. Support and resistance, support and resistance, you can add to the Natchi, how to the Natchi ways. Look through it, step by step, take your time. Go through it and you'll see, you'll be very, very um good in support and resistance. I use Jeff as well. After you go to the previ- um, the previous videos, you go on show more to the very first one. Which he has named the mountain, the mountain shows you the trend line, the support and resistance room as well. Which will really help you to determine where the price is heading up to. Where price has really visited before and what you should be expecting in the market. Okay, guys?
Yes, makes perfect sense, thank you.
Thank you so much, that is really good, that's what I do, I always go to um those classes you've mentioned a while. And I always encourage my team to do that.
Great, that is, that is really awesome. I, I know people have wow, but they don't really know where to start from. I, I've been there before, when I first got these, I was like, oh, where should I start from? I don't know where, but I sat down, I was really coming on sessions, but. Uh, I sat down, I was like, no, just go downwards and see what's really happening. I started from the mountain, and guess what, from the mountain to the peak. And now I'm using trading view to analyze things, you get the point? I did, it's not magic, it's nothing, all we have is to utilize these apps. These apps are really good for us to use, okay, guys?
Hundred percent.
Good.
Great.
Um, last week here, we, we discussed um. Risk management, okay? And I figure out one thing that we all can do. We all can apply to F T M O. F T M O, this, they are companies who give a refund. I'm not saying go there and apply for that, but they have a free trial. One there, which I want everyone to use, it helps you to be disciplined, knows what you were doing. Yeah, and it helps you to know. If it's really good for you to place a trade, because some, sometimes you just place the trade, because we are, we are just running after the money. But this one will help you. But this one will help you to know that when you are placing a trade, yeah? When you are placing a trade, is it appropriate for you to place a trade? Why are you placing the trade? And you see, this is what I'm, I've been doing to find you. These are something that. You should really do, and it really helps. Minimum trade for the days, that date you are trading. It gives you that five trades, that's the minimum. Your daily loss, it gives you that one, it gives you your maximum loss and your profit target. So i- if you follow this step by step, you, you develop your discipline as you go on. And as, as much as you do this and you pass this test, I'm. I bet you, you will be able to control your money management and you'll be really disciplined. On the market and not chase every trade you see, but always chasing the good trades. Okay, guys? It's called F T M O, yeah, F T M O. When you go to the free trial, that will really help you guys. I'm, I'm doing it and I know that people who does it really get um really self-disciplined. Use um using uh risk management, which is properly faced for your um, your balance. Not using anything like, why you think you, you can just put in and just end money, because. If you just do that, you are just dumbbling your money and the market is not your friend, okay, guys? And I'm done.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, it was just the resistance and support and we know the um. They're arranging, so hoping everyone was there with it. And anyone have any question for me?
Yeah, I just, something not related to what you said. So tomorrow is, tomorrow is bank holiday, right?
Oh.
So what, what happens? Are we placing trades or?
Hmm, of, when um, when is bank holiday for me, I don't trade. Yeah, tomorrow. I don't trade on bank. Look, you can see here, G B P. Have all day, the movement of the, the market will be really, really slow. Really, really. For G P, only the G B P people are on the bank holidays, that you can see.
So for others, so for others you can?
Yeah, if others are not on bank holidays and the movements are going, yeah, you can.
Can I um just add something? This is just, I could, I don't know if I'm right, but obviously knowing that um Forex is high in the U, in the U K. Um, that means that, you know, like our currency is really high, so if it's um not available all day.
You are sweating.
Liquidity.
Hey, what have you been doing? Um, can we change your? No, yeah, it's wet. Let's go.
No, it's.
What happened? Look at you. You catch cold. Okay, sorry, can, can you move on please? Um, hello? Can everyone hear me?
Yeah, please, we can hear you.
Yeah, I can hear.
Hey, can you, can you um give your contribution again? Because there, there was a disturbance over there, please.
Um, I was just saying.
Oh, sorry about that, family. I think we were blessed with that. Anyway, okay, please encourage.
I was just saying that, knowing that the great British pound is very, very strong in terms of Forex. And knowing that, you know, we are like the capital of Forex in terms of the U K. Um, the liquidity is gonna be really low in the markets tomorrow, because. Of course, it's just one pair, there's many pairs, but that's a really important pair. So just be careful with low liquidity, because it's like trading of, I don't know if people know over the counter, it's really. Yeah, it's just, it's kind of messy, so just be careful, but it's really good to like study on that day. Because you can still kind of, yeah, the markets are moving, they're slow, but that's what I'm just thinking. So great, when, when the great British pound, when, when England or U K is on holiday. Um, and America's on holiday, because they're really big, I normally take like care and not trade those days.
Hundred percent. Though the, the moves, but uh, as I said, I don't, I don't really. What advice um to trade on bank holidays, but it's up to you. Your money is your money. You get me?
Please, I mean.
You, you can use your demo account, study the market. And see how the movement is affecting the markets as well. You can see, i- it moves really slow, maybe you, you be like, oh, this is turning. You can stay in the whole day. I've trained bank holidays before. I can say, I, I was in for the whole day and uh, noth- nothing really happened till the next day. And market opening, then it, it goes up, then obviously it came back again. Not reaching my target, because um the market reverses, then decisions were making. Uh, the decisions were made, then, you know, trends may be breaking in the Asian time. You get me? So you don't really know what will really happen during that. Yeah, so uh, I would say, don't trade if you want to, you can do it. It's, it's your choice.
With caution.
Yeah, I, I, and I'm not educator, please, I'm not an educator, I am just like you, we are all learning. Yes, uh, that is my point of view. Yeah, so, yeah, it's up to you. And now the question, please, is your question answered?
No, 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 it's, um, I mean, my common sense was, it's a bank holiday, so let me say. But I just wondered, others were thinking.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
But I know, I know people who trade bank holidays, yeah, I, I normally. The, the percentage of me not trading is eighty percent.
Hmm.
Yeah, but sometimes I'm, I'm that stubborn guy that see the market and see um correct, like. See what the market is telling me and I'll be like, oh man, let me just leave this. If I see these reversals on the zones and I'm like, ah, let me just leave it. By the time I realize, I'll be placing trade.
Yeah, so, so just to add the question, I know you've gone through this resistance and support lines, right? I'm still quite new, so I, I, it's not something I'll be able to do straight away. So if you are following the guidance from shift. You just continue to do that, you don't need to worry about these lines, right? Because you're just following the trades that are called.
Yeah, hundred percent, but what you should know is, always, Justin and Jeff always say this. They are there to help us to be independent traders.
Yeah.
Okay, let's guess, this, I touch wood and I know this won't happen. Let's say if in the future, yeah, there's no more uh B. What we, what have you actually achieved from this company?
Yeah, I mean, and that, that's a thing I've noticed as well, because like you get. I know there's a G B P J P Y, which was called by gas and uh, G B P U S D, which is called by gas, both of them were buys. But then Jess comes and throws in a sale.
Yeah.
So then I find that quite confusing.
Okay, we, we caught something like scotting.
Hmm.
That we, um, can't, we call it contact trading, yeah? Let me show you something here. Sometimes. Oh, where am I? I'm coming. So um, Gustavo, yeah, I, I call him Gatu, so he's my best man, yeah? So he trades like the bank. Okay?
Yeah.
So you say he, he did it as a buy?
Yeah.
See, he traded like a bank, it was a buy, am I?
On the twenty third of August, I think, so it's like a eight hundred P target, so which is a long one.
Good. Look here, what it happened. On the twenty eighth August, yeah?
Twenty third, I think he first called it on the twenty third in the morning.
Twenty third of August.
I'm at there.
There.
Yeah.
You can see it's a buy.
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
Because what, I mean, the mistake I used to make, I mean, I ended up feeling a bit stupid, but I mean, obviously it's learning. So like I would place something and if it starts pulling back, I would then close, so each time I'd be losing money. So then I spoke to Nathan and then he showed me a link on Facebook, you know, about the placing your target as soon as it comes and letting it run. Until it gets to the top of the mountain, whatever, which means it then goes on for, for, for days. So that's something I'm trying to do, it's very difficult when it starts pulling back, because it plays on your emotions. But then when Jess throws in a sale, so that, that, then, then half the time, he, he recalls them as well.
Okay, so, what you should know is, the market doesn't really go like, whoa, up, 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 up.
Yeah.
It doesn't. What it does is, it goes up, it comes down, it goes up, now, it goes up, it comes down. As we started um this lesson, we know that the Apple's trend always have a higher high, a higher low. A higher high, higher low, which I explained it. Um, that when we say higher high, it means the high. Of this candle movement is higher than this high of this candle movement. So we call it a higher high, it's higher than this high, okay? So it, it happens in the market a lot. We can, we can go over here, you can see it over here. You see, the higher, the, the movement of this candlestick. It went really high than this high.
Hmm.
Yeah, and it came down and it went high. You can see that it went high, so the of this one is higher than this, that is a higher high. The high of this one is higher than this, that is a higher high. You can, and the bottom part is creating a higher low. So the low, low of this is higher than this one.
Hmm.
So it's a low, but it's a higher than this one, you see? So it's a call, a lower high, the same applies on, you can see it went up, down. This down or this low is higher than this low. Making this what, eh? Making this long what, a higher low.
Hmm.
You get me?
Yeah.
It, it goes like that, and when it comes to selling to, on the selling part, it goes. A lower high, because this high is lower than this high.
Hmm.
So it goes a lower high, let me use this one, so you can see, it goes in like this. That, 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 okay? So this. This high and this high, this is lower than this high, okay? It's a lower high, is a high, but it's lower than this high. This high is lower than this high, so it's a lower high.
Yeah.
You get me? The same is lower high before trend, obviously. Um, the market changes, okay? So at the bottom, we got the lower low. This low is lower than this low.
Hmm.
This low here, here is double, it's an M. When you carry on the um, uh, Jeff videos, which I will show you after. Yeah, it puts you, the reversal um signal or sign, this is an M. You can see, even here, you can see that there is a support here. Yeah, there is over there, and this low is lower than this low.
Yeah.
This low here and this low, this low is lower, low. This low is lower than that low, so it's lower low, it creates lower low.
Hmm.
Lower low, lower low, lower low, okay? So the movement of the up trend creates higher high, higher low, higher high, higher low. And down, lower low, um, lower high, lower low, lower high, lower low, okay? Now, back to what happened with the move. Okay, so it was going up, Gustavo say it was going up.
Hmm.
Yeah, it's, it's going up, it's creating higher high, higher low, higher high, and because it's coming downwards.
Hmm.
And the other guy say it's going for itself.
Hmm, hmm.
This is called a counter trading, is because of this.
Yeah.
There is a zone over here. Can anyone see a resistance and a support zone over here?
Resistance, support as well, yeah, support in the past, resistance more recently.
Good, good. So we can see over here, you see, it, it came to that zone, it rejected it.
Hmm.
And it came downwards, so if someone pray, uh, obviously plays a cell, it's a counter. It doesn't, that, the trade is like, is not valid. Until maybe the trend is breaking.
Hmm.
Okay, but as Mr. Nathan said, patience is the key. We know it's going apples, uh, we know the market always changing the trend every session. Like we have all types of sessions, that is the Asia and the London, the. You, uh, New York session and the Tokyo session, which um, when you go on um the. Shift up, all the videos there tells you about it, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
So counter trading is like trading against the market, getting your pips. Then, yeah, getting the small pips, then you, you continue with the trend.
Okay, okay, so I can, okay, so what you're saying is, if I've placed. Um, like Gustavo's call for the buy, which is like a long one, I can still do a sell from. And what is his name, Jeff?
You can, but you have to know what you're doing. Because if, if you are placing a cell and you are aiming like forty pips, because the, the educators, yeah? Are just predicting, maybe it will come. It will give you a hundred pips, but they are sure, if you, you can see, that's why we all, always tell you that. As a new beginner, you should always take twenty pips.
Hmm.
You always take twenty pips and twenty pips as, as the market is fresh or the trade is fresh, is really fresh. Look, it gives us seventy two pips.
Hmm.
Gives us seventy two pips, but look what it, it did, it respected the trend. It hits it and it came backwards, it came upside backwards, meaning. It came back to what Gustavo was saying, it was a buy.
Okay, yeah.
You get me? Gustavo will give you a long trade, will give you a long trade. But make sure that you are using your stops, um, your stop loss. Good, you are targeting the um, good amount of picks, yeah? And you are using the um trading stop loss as well. In order not for you to lose, because sometimes the market makers would just beat people as, because. They want to get the money, isn't it? They want to get the money, isn't it? So.
Hmm.
The market is not our friend. That's what you should know. So as much as you get profits. You close a load of profits, then you wait until you see what happens. If it comes against you. If it it comes against you, still you got a little bit of profit, yeah? But it comes against you, fine, you can re-enter, then carry on with it.
Hmm.
Is it clear? That that's why, that's why I'm not, I'm not a teacher, but that's what I do. I normally, sometimes I'll just cover my back with like three pips to my targets. Yeah, maybe I'm say, I'm 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 buying like Gustavo said, I should buy, I'm buying. Okay, I'm in profits, like twenty or seventy profits, fine. What I do is I'll just cover my my back with three pips or five pips. In profit, so no matter what happens. If it comes back and eat me alive, I'm still going to grab this, even zero point zero one, which is more. More better than storing my money in the bank, I have more interest rates than that, yeah? Yeah, so I wouldn't be. Yes, hundred percent, profits, even just zero point zero one is even better than you owing. You know, yeah, owing the market or making the market beat you up for that, you get me?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we we can, we can go ahead and see this, this is like. A downwards trend. Yeah, and I I know, I I might miss, let's say I might know why he he plays a sell.
Hmm.
If we go to less, lesser timeframe, we can see here the zone. It hit the zone, it rejected it, one. It came back again, it hit it and it's rejecting, they're rejecting candlesticks, you see? Then we we all know that there is, or there there are some zones over there, which. We can target, price visited here and bounce. It visited there, it bounced back. So obviously. We can target that, we can target here too as well. If it's that this way, and so this is his own. Can everyone see what I'm seeing? I'm 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 not using any magic, but can can everyone see what I'm seeing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
From this on to this fifty pips. Because it's rejecting these zones. And he he plays a cell in it, so the cell came in and look, boom, so. It's a counter trade, he's can't, he's just pleasing a counter trade. Meaning, if you have seen Dr. Brian, you can see that he's on the, you you would say I'm on a strong, long. U S D J P Y, that means it's really an apple strength, it's really going up. It's an apple string, yeah, but. A few, few minutes, you see that you say I'm selling short. Meaning that he's just going to do a counter trading. Meaning he's just going opposite the trend. Opposite the trend, then get some pitch, then continue with the movement of the trend. In the bigger um. In a bigger way or the bigger trend, is it understood? Yeah, as I always al- always say this. If someone is buying or someone is selling, both of you are right, to find you, both of you are right. But the whole thing is the appropriate time to enter the trade. Okay, the appropriate time to enter the trade, that is, if she gives you. It's going to a sell, fine. It's it it is really fresh trade, take it twenty pips, copy paste, wait. Hmm, you hit it, copy paste, boom, you hit it, twenty pips, just do twenty pips. And you find, you don't need like much bits, just do twenty bits, compounded twenty bits, twenty bits. And guess what, how your your account will grow, okay guys?
Yeah.
Great, great, any, is your question, okay, now I see, really understand.
Yeah, no, 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 that that's really helpful, that that's really helpful.
Let me go to this again. Let us go to this again, we all have this app, yeah, the wow app, oh, we all have it. And majority of us don't know how to use it.
It's very difficult, like seriously, when you're new, I spent like the whole month not managing to navigate around it.
Right, so this is how you open it, right? So while you do it, may I use Justin or Jeff?
Hmm.
So when you, Jeff, let's say Jeff, yeah, you open it, you see this. When you see this, you scroll downwards, you see his previous videos. Don't go to the S one, just scroll down, then you press on the show more. Then you go down, you press on show more, go to the very first video he did.
Hmm.
Inning of all these videos, yeah, go to the very first one. The very first one, he he called it mountain. He will show you. What actually trend line is, the resistance and support. The uh there are many videos, maybe you get bored, but still go. Patience is the key, still move on, go, press, show more, show more. You see? No more. And here we are, you can see the mountain. He will show you how to draw these lines.
Hmm.
Yeah, he will show you how to draw these lines, the resistance zones, everything is here, start from the very first.
Very beginning, yeah.
You move to the sideways, from here to here. Then you move from here to here to here to here, then you go that way, okay?
Yeah.
You go. Apart from him, I use Justin, Forest. You can go here, the live stream, or you can go to the educators, you can find them. I use Justin as well for the forest, um. The forest basic, I normally go here. So for the, you can see here, um let me go back again. You can see under here, it says forest basic.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you press on it, then you go downwards. To the video then, show more, you go downwards. You go down, patience is the key, you go downwards until you reach the first. The very first what video he did. The very first video he did, and trust me, this is a a market structure. It shows you the market structure, it shows you what we were discussing, the support and resistance zones today. Yeah, then you carry on, so you can do just um either him or Jeff, yeah. Watch it over and over and trust me, it's your homework this week. Try to watch next week, when we come on board. You'll be able to get something that we are just talking about, you'll be like, oh yeah, I know this, I know that. And always remember, use your trading view or any other um platform and use it. Use it, try to use it and understand. Yeah, with you, when you are watching this video. Watch it and use it, watch it, you practice, you watch it, you practice, you become perfect. There is the saying, practice makes man perfect, okay? It's not perfect, but it makes you good.
Makes it easier, yeah, so Justin and Jeff, Justin and Jeff, the very first videos, yeah.
Yeah, so you you can even watch it. As you go on, just carry on watching it, as soon as you you reach these place or the. The recent videos, you understand everything he's talking about. And guess what, it will reach a point that you you'll be on this educating platform. Whether they are speaking Spanish or they are French, you don't even know what they are speaking about, but you understand what. They are saying, that is how it works. When the the money um is about money talks, no matter what language it is, you will understand, okay?
Yeah, that's, I know that, that's really, really helpful, um yeah.
Great. Any, any other question, please?
Yeah, um I would want to make a suggestion.
Okay.
You can probably um one day teach a day and then. Teach us about the trading view, how to use the trading view.
Oh, fine.
Or two, how to draw a trend line. And then the 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 supporting, the stand line, like the way you are drawing them. It's it's a suggestion I want to pass through, I'm not trying to say anything, but I think that. Knowing how to pick your tools on the trading views is also important to the elite. As you are learning and you are practicing, you can be drawing there and stuff. And you also advise that, but no matter when I go on training view, I see that. They ask for like a fee, either you have to pay fifty dollar, um. Three hundred, two hundred and stuff, or you should definitely give me the the free trial, free trial.
It's up to you. The one you you pay, you get um you get access to some tools. Which you won't get access when it's free, you get me? So it's up to you for the. Sorry?
Are you a person? Are you a person?
Am I?
Now you, now you're fine now.
I I I didn't get you, please, sorry. Oh, are you talking to me? Hello?
Possibly not.
Oh, okay, okay.
I think she asked something, that's, yeah, but no, she's.
Oh, cool, so yeah, so for the trading view, it it depends on you. For me, yeah, if you want more access to some tools, like the alarm alert. There is limited. I let you can place on the free one and on the pay one as well, there are. Types of um ones, um the types of payments, you can do the different types of it. So if you choose the bigger one, yeah, you can get a bigger um. Access to more tools over there. But for free ones, you get limited access to some of them over there, is it understood? For that one, so one is up to you, that one is up to you, okay guy, um okay? Okay, cool, and for that, how to use trading view, um. I have this video, I'm going to post it in the group for everyone to watch it, it shows you. What the trading view is all about, yeah? The choose, what he is over there, okay guys, uh okay my guys. Like a guy, sorry, alright. Any question again, please? Sorry for today, we got, we 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 went extra mile. Uh because I I've consumed all your your time, sorry, sorry, I'm really sorry for that.
No, but but that's been really helpful.
Thank you, I'm trying to um see what I can get that um trading view. And please make sure you watch it.
Yeah.
Though it's long, but make sure you watch it. Always remember this. Always remember this, um. When we take. We take um. When you take something like the. Sorry, my concentration was a bit balanced, okay, um. I'm trying to get my screen back, cool. Alright. Now everyone can see my mouse moving. Yeah?
Yes, yes.
Great. Uh, a lot of things going on here, okay, cool. Let me hide everything here, then we we talk there. Now. While you take learn. And you remove the L, what is left?
N.
No matter what you go, no matter what you do, no matter what you are, who you are. Even never learn, you'll never end. Keep on learning and it will help you to achieve more. This is the skill set that will never disappoint you, though you you lose, you still lose, yeah, you are losing right now, but. Trust me, if you master this skill set, it will be the best of all in your life. That will really pay you, the only course that is not really taught in university is trading. The only course that is assured that when you finish it and you really know what you are doing. You get your work is traded. So it's up to you, learn to end. So without wasting my. What I have to say? If anyone have any question, you can just let me know, please. And I'll uh send the link into the group, how to use trading view. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so I will say goodbye to you all, thank you all for being on this call. And see you next week.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, have a nice um Sunday.
Bye.
Bye.